Hello and welcome to part three of our Ephesians Bible study. Today, we're gonna look at the second half of chapter two in Paul's Epistle to the Ephesians. And let's open with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to study together, even though we are apart, to look at your word, to understand what we have called to be as the body of Christ and the oneness that we have in Christ. And so, we pray that you send your Holy Spirit upon us so that we may be enlightened and encouraged by your word. In your Son's name we pray, amen. So today, we're gonna be looking at Ephesians, chapter two, verses 11 to the end, which is verse 22. And we'll be looking at the story of the Gentiles, how Paul sees the redemption of the Gentiles and somewhat of their story. And we'll be looking at some of the metaphors he uses for who we are in Christ now. So let's start by reading the text. And so, we'll look at verse 11 and following. Therefore, remember that at one time, you Gentiles in the flesh, called the uncircumcision by what is called the circumcision, which is made in the flesh by hands. Remember that you were at that time separated from Christ, alienated from the commonwealth of Israel, and strangers to the covenants of promise, having no hope and without God in the world. But now, in Christ Jesus, you who once were far off have been brought near by the blood of Christ. For he himself is our peace, who has made us both one and has broken down in his flesh the dividing wall of hostility by abolishing the law of commandments expressed in ordinances that he might create in himself one new man in place of the two, so making peace, and might reconcile us both to God in one body through the cross, thereby killing the hostility. And he came and preached peace to you who were far off and peace to those who were near. For through him, we both have access in one spirit to the Father. So then, you are no longer strangers and aliens, but you are fellow citizens with the saints and members of the household of God, built on the foundation of the apostles and prophets, Christ Jesus himself being the cornerstone, in whom the whole structure being joined together grows into a holy temple in the Lord. In him, you also are being built together into a dwelling place for God by the Spirit. So there's the text. So lots of things going on in this text. Again, it's another one of those big, long sections, lots of rhetorical devices being used, lots of metaphors being used to convey the change between the two groups. And so, let's look at first verses 11 through 13. So 11 through 13 talks about the story of the Gentile, the story of the person who's not Jewish. Basically, it's, I mean, we have to kind of go back. You have to understand some of the dynamics between Jew and Gentile because some of that kind of gets lost. And you know, a good way to know, a good way to understand this is to begin with sort of the idea that the Jews prioritize cleanliness or cleanness. It's not cleanliness like they gotta make sure the house is all clean and picked up. It's cleanness in the biblical concept, the Old Testament concept, the sacrificial concept, that there is the clean and the unclean, the holy and the common. And so, if, so there's these two sort of dynamics going on in Jewish culture. And by being clean and by being set apart by God, they are, in a sense, their own tribe, their own unit, their own nation, their own people. And that has been somewhat instilled in their culture for over a thousand years. And no matter who they sort of deal with, they are the, you know, the people of God, whether they call them the Israelites or the Judeans or the Jews. All of those sort of, the people keep this identity with them of being separate. And in some ways, whenever you consider yourself separate, you also consider yourself better. And so, there is this animosity between those who belong and those who don't. And there is some truth to that distinction. So the people of God are chosen, they are clean, they are made holy through the promise of God. They were elected by God to be his people. And the Gentiles, the other nations, were not chosen for their own reasons, for God's reasons that we can't know. And so, there is this otherness given to the Gentiles, this unworthiness and this outsider trait pushed on them. And so, we see that sort of shown in these verses when we have the circumcised versus the uncircumcised, that they are separated. Remember that you were at that time separated from Christ. They were separated from God, they were separated from the story of salvation. And now, they're being brought in. And so, we see some of these words, alienated and strangers to the covenant, alienated from the commonwealth of Israel, alien in the sense of foreigner, of stranger, of outsider to the commonwealth of Israel, which is just talking about the, I mean, in a sense, not the nation as we think of it now, but the gathering. Really, I suppose it's more of the submission under the law of the Torah that made them a people, that made them a tribe. And so, they have, in a sense, there's a fence, a border around them. And they were, they were outside of it. All these things have a result, and that result is they had no hope. So strangers to the covenants of promise, they didn't know the covenants, they didn't know what God had said to them because they were outside of the camp. And so, they had no hope and without God in the world. So they were ignorant, they didn't know the story, they didn't know the truth of the gospel or the promises or the working of God throughout history. And then, in 13, we have this turning moment. But now, so here was before, and now Paul is setting up a sort of after, but now, in Christ Jesus, you who were once far off have been brought near by the blood of Christ. And so, there's a lot of things, all these phrases are working together to convey the motion and the cause of that motion of the outsider becoming the insider. So now, in Christ Jesus, you who once were far off, you who are over here, you who were outside, alienated, stranger, didn't know anything, have now been brought near. How were you brought near? Did you do it yourself? Did you walk your own way? Did you find your way to get here? No, by the blood of Christ. So by the sacrifice of Christ, the gate is torn down, the curtain is torn in two. Now, there is no longer a dividing wall between those who were far off and those who were near. All can now come near. And you know, thinking about that, that goes back to the way the temple worked as well. Paul's gonna get in trouble, or he got in trouble during his life, and that's probably why he might be in prison now, is that he brings Timothy, a Jew, into the temple, or Timothy, a Gentile, into the temple where Gentiles weren't allowed. He brought an unclean, uncircumcised man into the temple. And this sort of just stirs everything up because for the Jews, there are places where the Jews can be and places where others can be. And if you're an other, you can't be as close to God, you had to stay far off. And so, now, Paul's sort of bringing in or bridging this gap between those who had to be far off and those who could be near. And now, everyone gets to go before the altar of the Lord, everyone gets to be near Christ. And so, then we go to 14, what peace has Christ brought to the Gentiles? So our second question there. For he himself is our peace, who has made us both one and has broken down in his flesh the dividing wall of hostility. Okay, so we see in 14, he's our peace, he's broken down the dividing wall. How so? And that's 15. By abolishing the law of commandments expressed in ordinances that he might create in himself one new man in place of the two, so making peace. So 15, what was the thing that divided Jew from Gentile? Well, the thing that divided Jew and Gentile was the law. How the Jews lived separated them from the outside world. And so, when Christ comes in, he sort of breaks down this dividing wall, this law of God, the law of Leviticus, the law of Deuteronomy, sort of the ceremonial laws, the dietary laws, not the moral laws, as we can discuss at some point. So we have discussed at some point, we talked, just give you a minute. There are four kinds of laws in the Old Testament. There is the first law of the national law. So the national law is governing justice and punishments. There's the ceremonial law, which governs the rituals of the temple. There's the dietary laws, which governs the diet of the people, what they eat, what they drink. And there's the moral law, these are the ten commandments, these are the things you shall not do, shall, and you shall. Excuse me. So you have those four types of law. Christ comes, and we see throughout Scripture that Jesus gets rid of, oh, there is no national law because Israel's not a nation anymore. There is no ceremonial law because the temple will be destroyed. And there is no dietary laws as we find it acts when Christ comes to Peter and tells him to kill and eat. There is now no distinction between clean and unclean, whether it be food or whether it be people, which is what Paul's getting after here. But the moral law still remains, so we still have those, thou shall not, you know, you still can't murder, you still can't commit adultery, just because Christ destroys the law does not mean that you'd sort of free rein. We still know God's will, but the law doesn't separate us from each other or from Christ. So the gospel of Jesus brings us to him. So by abolishing the law of commandments expressed in ordinances, by getting rid of all the stuff that the Jews use to sort of push people out who didn't belong, now, what Christ has done is he has brought two people into one. And so, this has to kind of go back, this idea of bringing, or seeing two men or two people becoming one has to do more with, obviously, not individuals, sort of, it's not a marriage metaphor necessarily, but a national metaphor, seeing two tribes, two nations becoming one and having peace. So it's a reconciliation between parties, which we see then in verse 16. And might reconcile us both to God in one body through the Christ, or through the cross, thereby killing the hostility. So reconciliation being the metaphor here between Jew and Gentile. Reconciliation is a big idea with the gospel, that we are reconciled to God the Father through Christ the Son. Jesus reconciles us as sinners while we were still sinners, while we were still in rebellion, we are reconciled to the Father for our sins, for our rebellion. We're given forgiveness, and that brings reconciliation. And the same way with our own relationships between people, we don't have reconciliation until there is forgiveness. And so, other, when it's, if you do anything else besides forgive, it's not a reconciliation. You know, maybe it's a looking past of past faults or it's, or fleeing the problem or fighting it out. You can do those things, but it's not reconciliation unless there's, unless there's forgiveness. So this is what Christ does for all men, for all humans, for all people. Now, let's take this one step further into application. There are, there are always outsiders. There are always people in our culture, there are always people in our own tribes that don't belong, whether it's by race, ethnicity, religion, looks, appearance, class. Name a trait, and we have discriminated against someone in some capacity due to that trait. And the New Testament is clear, and Paul's clear here, that there is no division among people anymore. You don't get to divide people because everyone is worthy of salvation. And that's, I mean, that's key to understanding this text is that when we go out into the world, when we go out and deal with people, just any people, we have to recognize that they are people worthy to be saved, worthy of Christ's love, worthy of salvation, just as we are. That that is the primary way in which we see others is not through miscellaneous traits or physical things or mental things or whatever traits, characteristics, histories that we can come up with. The way we see people, the way we understand our fellow human beings is that they are worthy of love and respect because Christ loves them. Christ died for them. And so, it's important that I have this idea of universal atonement, universal sacrifice of Christ because all people are now brought into the tribe of Christ being willing to die for them, for you. And we can then take that message to anyone and everyone. There's no distinction then, and we could say, we can say to anyone that we come across, Jesus Christ has died for you because he loves you and he wants you to be part of his kingdom, of his people. And we can prove it here from Scripture, that Christ wants you and desires you to be saved. And that's a powerful message to bring to someone. That's, that's the true gospel being proclaimed to someone who's dealing with self doubt, who's dealing with issues of self worth, who's dealing with depression, guilt, shame, fear. These are the things that sin brings into our lives. And we can bring the light of salvation, the light of the gospel into their lives by simply proclaiming this simple truth that there is no division, that Christ wants all, even you. With whatever baggage, with whatever shame, with whatever things that you carry, Christ wants you to be a part of his people. And he's died so that that can happen. His blood's been shed for you. So that's huge, that's a huge idea in this text. And so, 17, he came and preached peace to you who were far off and peace to those who were near. This is the peace he's bringing, he's bringing that gospel peace. And then, I have a question, question three here, look carefully at 18, who is at work in this verse? So 18, for through him, we have both, we both have access in one spirit to the Father. So for through him, through whom? Through Jesus Christ. Through Jesus Christ, both Jew and Gentile, so all people, have access in one spirit to the Father. And this is, this is the gospel message being carried out to its final conclusion, that through Jesus, we have a spirit, the Spirit, the Holy Spirit, that connects us to the Father, that brings that salvation to us in hand and brings that reconciliation because we and the Father were far off due to our sin. And so, Christ brings us towards the Father through the Spirit. And all of us are receiving the work of Christ. There's no other way to get to the Father. And that's kind of the point of the question three. There's, it's not going to be you who do this work. It's not going to be anyone else who's going to be able to bring you closer to the Father, who's going to bring you the Spirit. It's only Jesus Christ. Only Christ, through his word, through his means, is going to bring salvation to you and bring salvation or reconciliation, we'll try to stick with the same atonement metaphor, bring reconciliation to you, to the Father, and restore that relationship. So that's, that's 18 and then the point there. So now, 19 moves to another metaphor, moves away from reconciliation to citizenship. So question four, what does citizenship with God's household mean? How do we relate our own citizenship to that with God? We'll get to that second question in a minute. So verse 19, so then, you are no longer strangers and aliens. So you're not, this is, this is the language used before in 11, 12, and 13. But you are fellow citizens with the saints and members of the household of God. And then, it's gonna change metaphors again. So let's look at what we're talking about here, citizens. Fellow citizens with the saints and members of the household of God. So there's lots of ideas with citizenship, right? So we talk about how do we form good citizens for whatever country, I mean, for the United States or for whatever country, how you gonna form good citizens? How do you get good citizens? Well, one of the big things we have is education, right? So the public school systems, one of the main tasks of public school and Lutheran schools for that matter, is to create good citizens. People who are, who will vote, people who will be well educated, people who will be beneficial to society. All of these things are meant to be conveyed through education. This is why we would kind of shoot for a well-rounded education and you know, why the pledge of allegiance is done at the beginning of every day in most public schools now. Or it used to be, I don't know, I haven't been in a public school for a while. So let's assume that that's still the case. And so, that sort of points to the citizenship question or the citizenship that we see in our everyday lives of this formation and what we're trying to shoot for. So here, we kind of, so we understand that idea of citizenship in a physical world, sort of allegiance to a land, allegiance to a set of principles, tribalism to a degree, being faithful to the tribe and its people. But this is a different sort of system, this is citizenship with the saints and members of the household of God. And so, what do we take from the normal citizenship requirements that we think of when we think about citizenship? How does that apply to joining the tribe of the saints? So that's not a question on the page, but it's a question worth pondering. I suppose it's the question on the page, what does it mean? And you can probably go a couple different ways with this depending on what you're thinking about with the idea of citizenship. But there's, when you think about, you know, participation in tribes or such, there's requirements, right? There's, there's things you do to show you're part of the tribe, of the nation. Yes, instead of using the sort of USA example, let's use another example of tribalism in America, which is more rampant. Sports. So let's say you're a Purdue fan because everyone ought to be, best university, you know, in America, or at least, maybe not in America, at least in Indiana. No, we're, no, I'm a grad in America, in America, final answer. So what are the expectations if you're gonna be a Purdue fan? Well, you're going to watch the games, you're gonna own a t-shirt, you're going to make a pilgrimage to West Lafayette so that you can observe the rites and rituals in the place. You're gonna, you're gonna be in the parking lot tailgating before the games. You're gonna, you know, eat hot dogs at 10:30 in the morning because it's an 11 o'clock kickoff or whatever. You're gonna be sitting out in the rain or in the snow for a basketball game because it's the thing to do, and you're a faithful member of the tribe. And so, there's these, there's these things that you're willing to do, you're willing to sacrifice your own well-being for the sake of the team. You know, it's not wise to sit outside the gate for tickets for the basketball game when a big test is tomorrow, but you're gonna do it anyway because you care about the team. What if we took that idea and brought it into the church? That sort of fervor, that sort of zeal, that willingness to sacrifice? What would that look like? Well, maybe it looks like watching a Bible study at home because you can't get together at church on a Sunday. Maybe it looks like buying a Trinity Lutheran t-shirt or having a coffee mug or being here on Sundays when you can and giving an offering and dedicating and sacrificing your time, talent, and treasures to a cause, to a set of principles. And in doing so, and being willing to tell people and show people and wear it on your chest that you're a fan, you belong to this group. So maybe I'm using that example that kind of shows some ways in which we can think about being a citizen of God's household, citizen with the saints, being, having a pride in our association, having some patriotism with the church, I suppose. So there's, there's question four. Oh, then the second part. How do we relate our own citizenship to that with God? So this is an opportunity to kind of talk about the left and right hand realms. So before Lent and before the outbreak, we had two tonight Bible studies in which we talked about politics and religion. And one of the main ways or frameworks for understanding issues of politics and religion is Luther's two realms. And so, there's the left-hand realm and the right-hand realm. The right-hand realm is the church, and the church has the gospel, the church proclaims the word, the church operates with the Spirit. The church's goal is a restoration of all things, it's looking forward to the new heavens and new earth. These are the goals and the means and how it's going to be accomplished. In the left, we have the state. And in the state, we have the law and we have the sword. You know, why do you pay your taxes? Because if you don't, the government will throw you in jail. They use the sword, the means of punishment, the means of force upon you to get their will accomplished. If someone doesn't obey the law, they'll use force of some means to convince you to do it. Unlike the right-hand realm where we have the gospel that just sort of proclaims to you and waits for you to hear, waits for the Spirit to work upon you. There's no forcing, forcing someone to be a Christian. Now, obviously, in the past, there has been. But Lutherans would generally say, don't do that. You don't get to, use this, the sword is not the tool of the right, it's the tool of the left. And so, the goal of the left is order and justice, while on the right, it's forgiveness and mercy. And so, so there's opposing, there's opposing goals. And the Christian, you live in both of these realms. You live as a citizen of heaven, you live as a citizen of the church, you live as someone who lives in the right, knowing the gospel, proclaiming the gospel to the world, working towards the restoration of all things. But you're also a citizen in the But you're also a citizen in the left. You're working towards justice. You're working towards, uh, an end to violence and, and end to uh, the crimes and the evils of the world. You're looking for peace and for order. And you're willing to let the government use the sword to enforce that order. And so that citizenship, um, the citizenship to heaven doesn't necessarily negate the citizenship to the world, but they inform each other. Um, and we have to live then in that paradox of both. And if you wanted more information, you should have come on Tuesday nights, uh, January through, uh, through April or through April, yeah, January through March, uh, before Lent got started. And then you could have learned all sorts of things. So then, then the next question. What metaphor does Paul end with and how is it different from what he said in other letters? So looking at twenty and then through twenty-two. Built on the foundation of the apostles and prophets, Christ Jesus himself being the cornerstone, in whom the whole structure being joined together grows into a holy temple in the Lord. In him you also are being built together into a dwelling place for God by the Spirit. So what's the metaphor? Well, the metaphor has to do with building and building a structure and not just any structure, but a holy temple. And so Christ is the, is the cornerstone in which the whole structure is being joined together. Now, what's the purpose of a cornerstone? This is one of those kind of confirmation questions. Most of us, most adults will know what a cornerstone is because we've, you know, seen one. Uh, we have the, you know, the, the laying of the cornerstone for a new building or whatever and, you know, you put stuff in it and you never see it again and so on and so forth. But structurally speaking, the cornerstone in ancient architecture is the, the stone that sets the lines. So it sets the corner so that everything is square. If things aren't square, then things are crooked, uh, and the whole building gets thrown off. And so as someone who's been renovating, one of the things when renovating or when trying to, to build things is that it's always easier to build new than it is to try to retrofit old. Because new, you can make sure things are square and that things are right and that they were built properly the first time. When you're dealing with something that's old, you, there's no guarantees that things are still square because wood moves and things shift and things get out of place. And all of a sudden, the thing that was square in nineteen sixty is slightly out of square in two thousand and twenty. That's just the way houses are and you just have to live with those sort of things. And so you have to find ways to deal with things that are out of square. But once they're out of square, there's no squaring it up. And especially when you're, you know, building with stone, um, once the line's off, it's off. And everything else sort of has to live with that thing being out of square. So it sets the lines, it sets the squareness, it sets how everything else is going to be built. And so when we see Christ as our cornerstone for the temple that's being built, he becomes then our model for what we're going to be built into. And so when we think, okay, starting back from the beginning in verses eleven through thirteen, God is forming us into a new kind of people. He's forming us not in a Jew-Gentile sort of division that everybody's used to and that the culture's been working with for a long time, that the Jews have been working with, that the Gentiles have been working with. He's going to form something new and that newness is going to come through the blood of Christ. It's going to come through his sacrifice. It's going to come through the peace given by Christ to all people. And now God's going to build a new temple, a holy temple in the Lord with Christ as the cornerstone. And so this people is going to find in their, find in Christ an example for what they're supposed to look like in the rest of the world, how we see each other and how we live with each other. And so this is, this is kind of tying it all together because again, this is all one sort of big idea um, that he's working with here. And though he's using a lot of metaphors and though he's kind of bringing in a lot of different things, it's all working towards the one central thought that through Christ, we are a new kind of people doing a new kind of thing. And we know what that thing is by looking to Christ on the cross. How we are as people, how we live as Christians, how we are being formed and shaped and built together and brought together is in the same way of Christ on the cross. Dying for others to bring reconciliation, to bring peace, to bring forgiveness. And so that becomes our work as the, the temple being built. The temple is the place where people find forgiveness, people find peace, people find reconciliation. We see that in the Levitical code with sacrifices. We see that, uh, through history, we see that through Christ on the cross. Uh, that the temple is the place where peace is given, uh, and peace is made. And so this then becomes our mission. It becomes our task as people to bring that peace, to bring that reconciliation, not just to those in our immediate lives and our families, but to those out in the world to, to be bearers of forgiveness, bearers of that light, uh, that we can bring. And that willingness to be the first to forgive. And that's, I mean, that idea in itself is kind of a, is the hard thing uh, of being a Christian is being willing to be, to forgive first. So often we want to hold on to those grudges. We want to hold on to the pain. We want to hold on to the hurt and hold it over others until they are willing to, to do whatever to make us happy. To, to grovel, to beg, to, to, to pay penance, um, to us and our ego and our throne. But instead, we're, we're called to be the people who are willing to forgive. The people who are willing to reconcile, the people who are willing to take the first step or the second and the third to bring that reconciliation to others. And that's a hard task, but it, and it, it's a cross. You gotta pick up the cross and follow Christ and it's called the cross for a reason. Not only is it foreshadowing Christ's destruction, but when we do the same thing, we have to sacrifice ourselves, we have to sacrifice who we are, we have to sacrifice our ego and our own sort of ideas of, of, of what we deserve and what we have rights to. And instead lay down those things, uh, for the sake of peace, for the sake of reconciliation, for the sake of mercy and compassion, and ultimately for the sake of forgiveness. So that's it for chapter two. I don't want to get into chapter three. We'll keep this one a little shorter than, than the past ones and, uh, and I'll see you next time. Thanks very much for, for listening and for watching.